Please rise for the Council on Edutables. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Curry, two more roles. Callander, here. Weiser.
Here.
Goddard.
Here.
Lapp.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Grant.
Michael.
We have a quorum. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting for January 3rd, 2017, and the executive session?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Callander?
Yes.
Weiser?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
Bates?
Yeah.
Grant?
Right.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the accounts payable. And again, in the absence of having someone appointed to review them, I review them prior to the meeting. And they all look fine to me. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So may.
Oh, thank you. Second? Second. Any questions? Paul? Weiser?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Callander?
Yes.
Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the audit report for 2015-16. And our good friend and auditor Sydney Groupstad is here. Good evening.
Well, from my perspective, the City of Eagle Bay had a quiet year. But I had nothing exciting to report, and I'm fine with that. That's absolutely, we've seen a lot of things going on this last year. Transitions of baby movers retiring, transitions, software. But for City of Eagle Bay, it was very quiet. We have a clean opinion. There are no ordinary minimum standard comments, no budget overages. It was a very nice, quiet year. I reviewed the general entries, and there was really nothing unusual stood out. Happy to take you a little bit through the MDNA. It compares the activities of the governmental funds and the enterprise funds, starting on page four, to the prior year. And I'll just be very brief. Curry has gone through and identified specific areas, just generally, if you're up, if you're down, the percentages. To the far right, I will take you comparing total current assets and other to the previous year. And I'm going to round up here, about 473,000 with your current, which reflects cash and receivables, they're up. About 473,000 of your previous year. Total assets are up, about 200,000. Overall, your total asset and deferred outflow is about 313,000. Expenditures, the long-term debt, total liabilities, they're down about 73,000. So overall, your net position has improved by 386,000. Page five is reflects your overall city activities. Again, the governmental, which are services to the city, with the enterprises being the water, sewer, and harbor, taking it to the far right again. Total revenue we're seeing is up 134,000. And you can see the breakouts of what revenue consists of, with the property taxes, other taxes, capital contributions, and grants. Expenses are up. When you do the comparison of this year to last year, between the governmental and the enterprises, they're up about 660,000. So the bottom line is, overall, your change in net positions down near about 600,000 from previous year. The rest of the report, which is the main presentation, there is really nothing unusual to discuss. This, the statement of net position is specific then here to June of 2006. And it's more in detail what current assets represent. Liabilities have broken out more into accounts payable, payroll taxes. The page eight, if you want to do a comparison overall to the far right, the majority down in numbers, starting in the first column, it's showing you governmental's brought in 174,700. And enterprises with not that much more, 312,000. From that point, we do a presentation of governmental. Nothing has changed from previous years, so some of you might be more familiar with that. The enterprises, starting on page 12, are broken out to the actual, remade major funds there, the water, sewer, and harbor, reflecting its assets, liabilities. At the end of the year, page 13, it's profit loss. And I'll point out, if you change the net position, water funds coming in at 111,000, sewer at 273,000, and harbor reflecting a loss there of 172,000. And then the cash flows specific to those enterprises. At year end, the water actually increased its cash position by 172,000. I'm rounding up. Sewer was down about 28,000 from its cash flow by the end of the year. And harbor actually increased its cash position by 7,230 dollars. Now, I said that harbor, you know, had a loss, just depreciation involved. It's not just cash. So, overall, the harbor did net an increase in its cash flow this past year end. You know, other than that, the disclosures increase. The presentations are the same as far as the budgets. Page 43, it's the combined general fund. The city chooses to have more detail in its budgets, yet we do combine it into the general fund. And the combined general fund actually represents, not only its budget itself, but the transient room tax and the parks and building fund. So, and then I think we also combined this year the state tax relief fund from two, from the survey. Maybe not. You know, we go into overrevenues. More funds are being combined, it depends on each entity. But we take a look at what the purpose of that fund, if it's really part of the general fund or not. So it's more Gatsby standards combined. But we do, each fund that the city adopts is reflected in its own self-balancing set of curves within this. You might need to go to the table of index to see it. But we show the, at the minimal level, that budget presentation, and we start combining it up to the full, not scheduled presentation. Standards continually grow. I don't think that will change. We have an industry review administration in, I don't know if that will have any impact. The audit area certainly won't have an impact on the tax arena. And I'm speaking of private sector, you know, not governmental. But from my perspective in the accounting, the standards, the regulations are ramping up. It's just the nature of times we're in. But City of Eagle Bay, it manages its cash flow. And certainly is being monitored well, that there's no overages, there's no supplemental damages. That's it as well. Thank you, ma'am.
That's you guys. Good job.
All of us. Well, it is all of you, yes. And you helped too, Sydney, thank you.
Well, I tried to help.
I had a question, noticing on page 28 and on first, some comments about PERS benefits? And I know some cities are concerned about that increase. How are we set up for that?
It's been a very new year. It's been a very, you know, the court case, it's been pulled back, they're re-considering it. I can't really tell you what to expect, what to anticipate. They're definitely, arson municipals are in a sad position. And they've taken steps, because they're limited in services, limited in resources. And I'm thinking the fire registers often are starting to step up and starting to reduce some reserves. This, I think, is just maybe settling out a little bit. City of Eagle Bay is not looking, not looking bad. But, you know, this is based on a couple of years' old information too. And then they project, and then they change the playing field. So I am not the one to say, or want to anticipate in the future, but right now, the city doesn't look, the city just seems to be fine. Fine, what does that mean? I'm not concerned right now. I'm not concerned at the moment. We have more liability obligations coming up in the future that are to get booked. It's post-employee benefits. There's some other things coming down the line. Eagle Bay, it handles, it manages itself well. I don't see anything at the moment. Your revenues are decreasing, your expenses are growing. That's something you're aware of, and it's not new. That problem doesn't, it's not one away.
So I'm looking, in regards to following Debbie, Councilwoman, Debbie said, I'm looking on page 39, I'm an already published employee retired citizen, and a comparison between 2015 and 2016. So can you explain to me a 2015 on the city's proportionate share of the net pension liability? It's got, we're at a annual 205,000.
And then we're going to a positive.
Yeah.
That, we knew it was going to happen, we brought that up for the previous year. We had a prior period adjustment back in 2014. And, and I'm sorry, I cannot explain this well enough. I am just, this person has been a rough animal to follow. But we knew there would be a swing. And actually, the swing was more favorable for the City of Eagle Bay this year. We see some entities picking up their liability significantly. This is not the case of what, or where we are with the City of Eagle Bay. Why the change? Why the swing? I really can't give you a good answer. I know the projections were based on some specific points that they had set up, and then the court case threw it out. And so what was presented last year was not based on the revisions. And I don't know if those revisions have even run through and stabilized the base. So I am being completely vague because...
Because it's completely vague.
Because it's completely vague, and the playing field continually changes. And for just stability and being consistent each year, I'm not, I don't believe that will happen yet. And I have no position of authority to give a opinion why.
So the way I understand what you're saying is that in 2015, we were, we were in excess with, and then this year, we were, we owe the 400-plus thousand, our net liability?
Yes. And that was coming, it was like a stage for two years before they came to sync. And again, I saw a swing where it went 100,000 or so. Step off of liabilities to entities. Originally, as you know, all the projections are based on great earnings, so they weren't there, those rates were not there. I think it'd be, you know, to really give you the good answers, I think the first people need to come, have to do a presentation. I'm just, I'm not those spokesman.
If that's something that council would like, we can probably arrange it. Maybe it should be a workshop.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, Mayor, if I may, just, so we're, we owe PERS in 2016, or we paid that 490, 495,95,000 dollars? About 490,595,000. And we're managing that, Curry?
Well, that's not what was paid.
No, that's, no, that's the unfunded liability.
The unfunded liability is almost a half a million. So it's been a swing of almost three-quarters of a million dollars from last year.
Right.
Is that correct?
Every entity in the state is facing this issue. Until they...
From one degree or another.
Yeah. Well, actually, we're in better shape than a lot of them. Until PERS gets its act together, and the court case is finally resolved, and we're not going to know what our real unfunded liability is. But we could certainly arrange to have someone from PERS come and talk to council if you'd like to be better educated about it. Yes, everyone would like that.
The main point I just want to bring out, whatever obligation's been set up, is set for Sydney's met.
Right. That's the important part.
Yes. I appreciate it. It's kind of unsettling, but I cannot give you a satisfying answer because I don't have an answer.
It's very frustrating.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions for Curry? For, I'm sorry, for Sydney?
That's what first does he mean. Yeah.
Sydney, thank you. You're so faithful, you come every year, you bring us a report. We really, we really depend on you, and we really appreciate your work.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate working with the city. It's been a nice relationship, and of course, I love to miss Curry. And I just, she's, I think she's done very well for the city.
True statement.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
The next item on the agenda, we have a guest, Jenna Vermon, from ODOT Region 2, who's the Active Transportation Liaison. And Larry Lewis, our own city planner, are going to give us a presentation.
Yes. I had a really pretty presentation, and then we just decided...
Oh, it's fine, we decided, we had time, but we decided we'd just chat.
So, but I'm going to spend a few minutes, before we get to your project here that we're specifically talking about, I was going to spend just a couple of minutes to tell you why the heck I'm here, and who I am, and what's going on at ODOT. You guys have just talked about that project south of town, which is very large and multifaceted. I'm talking about a different little project on the north end of town. So just so you know, I'm learning about that project, but I'm not involved in that yet. So, so my name is Jenna. This is a new position for ODOT. Active Transportation Liaison is kind of a mouthful. Active transportation is the new term for bicycle and pedestrian. So you've probably been hearing that some. The reason why I'm here, there's a lot of reasons why, ODOT is hiring these physicians. The bicycle pedestrian thing, I'm sure you're hearing about more these days. It's definitely growing. As an organization, our state DOTs have historically been about cars and trucks in Oregon, that's extremely relevant here, because so many goods are moved around the state by trucks. At the same time, our DOTs don't get nearly as much money as they used to. So one of the things that's happening at that kind of big level is that we know that we can't just build more big roads, or more lanes, or freeways, or bypasses. We just don't have a lot of funding at that level anymore. And there's also more understanding that even if we build more lanes and roads and things like that, that doesn't always take care of a congestion problem, because we have population growth happening at the same time, right? And sometimes when we build more lanes, more people just choose to drive. So really trying to be comprehensive in how we look at transportation. And this is really happening all over the country. I just, I'm from Oregon originally, but I just moved back here after 10 years in Colorado, working in bicycle advocacy and education. And so it's a very real thing there in Colorado. It's a really big deal, in large part because of the economic impact. So many people come there to do these types of activities, but it actually really brings in a lot of money to the economy. And so it's understood that when we're looking at our infrastructure, we want to make, help it to accommodate all different types of people that are getting around in different ways. So at the same time that that pressure is happening with funding limitations, there's this obesity epidemic that's going on, that I'm sure you've heard about, where a lot of people are driving all the time, because that's how we built our cities, and so we just don't walk a bike. Or, as you mentioned earlier, they're not comfortable walking even around the community because of the infrastructure, and that all leads to these health issues that we see increasingly as a problem. We also know in Oregon, especially along the coast here, that what I call the viconomics, of the economic impact is really relevant and real. You guys get about 6,000 cyclists a year. I just tried to rescue one, by the way, on the side of the road, who was caught in this horrible weather. He was walking his bike, because I think he was literally afraid he was going to get blown over. And he was still out there, right? So it's a little bit crazy, even to my mind. I've ridden the coast though, so I can tell you, I was one of those people. I did seaside to Brookings about four years ago. So I did it myself. But anyway, so we've got the economic, positive economic impact it can bring in. We know that when people bike and walk through communities, they stop more, they spend more money, things like that. We know that there's this health issue, that we'd love to just, if people are comfortable getting around, biking and walking day to day, that could really help remedy some of that. We don't have the money to just build bigger roads anymore. So, you know, you put all that together, and there's a safety issue. And that right now is like the big, the big issue, I feel like, that ODOT's really focused on. And there are, you know, high incidents and rates of crashes and fatalities. And it turns out that Oregon has one of the higher ones in the country. I think it's in part because we have more people out doing more biking and walking. So some of that can be a little bit misleading. But we also have more fatalities and serious injuries in some states. So a lot of discussion happening right now about how to make it safer, healthier, bring money into communities, and all of that. So hence, my role. And so that's why I'm here. And so we are figuring out my role in Region 2. So you mentioned Region 2, so that's written down here. It's a really big region. You guys are in the most, the region in the whole state that has the most communities. And, you know, Region 1 is Portland, it kind of has its own, obviously, one area. It's very different than the rest of the state, you know? And then you've got Eastern Oregon, you have a couple regions. And you've got Southern Oregon, they have half the coast. And then you've got this region, which is like, goes all the way over to Oak Ridge, and then comes all the way out here, and goes all the way up to Astoria. So that is my region. So ironically, I'm driving more than I've ever driven before, while talking about bicycle and pedestrian stuff. So anyways, as part of my work, I'm, like I said, we're still figuring out how I can be most effective in this role. But one of the things that I am really clear on is that Region 2, your region, has always had this little pot of money that we haven't done a great job of spending. And where this pot of money comes from was a bill that was passed in 1971. It's called the Bike Bill. Oregon has a very long history of thinking about these things, which is actually really amazing. And having been outside of Oregon for years, I can tell you that we all look to Oregon for policies and programming around bicycle and pedestrian stuff. So we really are the lead in the country in a lot of ways. So I'm really excited to be doing this year. But anyway, there was a bill that was passed in 1971 that said at least 1% of our state tax should, gas tax, should go, needs to go to bicycle and pedestrian projects. And so out of that 1%, we have a program called the Sidewalk Improvement Program. And I'm setting up a process for Region 2 to use that money in the most kind of impactful, you know, low-hanging fruit kind of places that we can. And in my short time there, a project here has kind of bubbled up from a few different places. One, it came up and is identified in your draft TSP that I've looked at, which is really great, by the way. And another came from Citizen Concerns, I think, just organically, from Thundering Shores. And what it is, is that missing Chanka sidewalk that I'm sure you're all familiar with, leading from Thundering Shores into Boiler Bay. And the folks in my office were really excited for us to choose this project as one to invest in, I guess, to use this sidewalk improvement program for, because what we're really looking for are missing links. If you think about your car network, our road network, we have a very complete network for cars. So if you pull down a street, you expect it to then link to another street, and you know you can, you know, turn around and get out and connect. When you look at our pedestrian and bicycle network, if you look at that as a transportation network as well, which is what we're doing these days, then you might start to notice that there's a lot of sidewalks that just end, or bike lanes that end, and things like that. And so what we're really looking to do right now is to identify those missing links and to find kind of those great projects that can be relatively small amount of money and have a potentially great impact. And what I love about your project here is that there's clear desire for people to walk up there, because you can see it. You know, where people are walking, they call it desire lines, you know, like those little cow trails. There's a lot of different words for it, but the new one is the desire lines. And, and there's this great destination, right? Your downtown for one, and then a destination on the other hand, which is Boiler Bay. So we, we are estimating right now, we think it's maybe in the range of $200,000 for that block of sidewalk infill. I just came out with some engineers and some folks to sort of do a preliminary evaluation of it. And so we just wanted to tell you about it tonight. I know that Larry has, I think you've talked to them about it before, as part of the TSP process, isn't that right?
Sure, the TSP was not directly with the city council.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe not, although you were aware of it.
Yeah. So, so the process right now is to come up with an actual design for it. So to take back information from our visit out here, and to have the engineers draw up an actual design. And I'm looking to Larry, because I actually haven't been through this process, like on the ground, every step of the way, like this. So jump in if you, but, you know, to do the actual design. And then we actually will do the contracting. You need to have someone come out and do the work as well. And you might be thinking that it would make sense to combine the two projects, since they're both, but right, you're right. That has federal money involved, and it's really complicated. These are state dollars, and they're much less complicated. And we can actually do it through our maintenance office, which makes it less complicated. I am trying to streamline these smaller projects as much as I possibly can, which is still going to be a challenge. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie about that. It is an amazing process-oriented place. So, but I'm doing what I can to kind of streamline them. So my hope is, is the two-year turnaround, you know, at least, you know, maybe even a year and a half.
So you're saying you're just starting now?
Yeah.
And maybe by the time you get to the point where you're working out there, it'll be a year from now?
Right.
And you finish a year and a half to two years from now?
Yes. That is my thinking.
Okay. Well, I'm relieved to hear that, because we're going to have a quarter of a million people, modest, I've heard, members, coming this summer. And we certainly don't want work to be going on during that period.
Nope, I don't think you do. Even though I love the MDI, we shouldn't be done by that. Which I thought about it, and then I went back to my people, and I'm like, "Come on, can we do this by August?" And they, you know, so I'm learning to get more realistic. And they, you know, so I'm learning to get more realistic as I spend more time at a state middle-level agency.
Uh, Jenna?
Yeah.
Your last name?
Berman, B-E-R-M-A-N.
Okay, so I'm, I just kind of made some notes about some of the highlights that you had said. About six thousand bikers come down here a year. I, I, I'm really taking things from a businessman standpoint. I own some, a couple of businesses downtown. And so one of the major concerns that I have, and also as a councilman that, that I want to share with you is traffic flow. And what you alluded to is that anything that's going to cause angst amongst people to get through the town rather than stop at the town
Right.
is, is of a concern to me. And often that's what happens when, when somebody gets slowed up with traffic in a town. They're less likely to stop there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so when you say six thousand bikers, that's, that's about on a very, very slow day in Devoe Bay. That's how many cars pass here in twelve hours, okay? So six thousand bicyclists, I figure would represent less than one hundredth of one percent of the traffic down here at the coast. And when you say the, the economic benefits of, of these, this kind of traffic, you mean secondary benefits? Because do, do the bicyclists, do they pay a fee to register their bike to be able to drive on the roads? That gas taxes paid for it?
No, no, they, they're drivers as well. They pay for gas tax and they pay property taxes. And a lot of our roads, work comes from that as well.
No, I, I, and I don't want to be completely critical, I just want to put things in perspective.
Right, right.
But now, in this project, we're talking about Larry, we're talking about connecting. Is there almost a continuous sidewalk that starts where down at, can you kind of show us?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that was the next part, that was the next part.
So, yeah, so I'll pass this out. This is really brief, but this is just a front and back. And it's a, a map with some aerial photos and some other photographs, which talk specifically about the stretch of, of missing sidewalk. And this goes back, I'm going to say this goes back like four to five years now, when there was a lot of talk about, hey, what about that missing sidewalk up there at the north end? I remember when Skip Pointing was a councillor, he, he was always complaining about that missing sidewalk up there.
So I gotta, it begs the question on sidewalks. Now, I'm all, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, okay? Is there also a bicycle lane associated with building a sidewalk?
So, you want me to take that? So we did meet last week, Jenna and I, and three other ODOT people to, to discuss what's the best thing to do here. And what we concluded, because earlier Jenna and I had, we talked about, do we do sidewalks? Do we do bicycle lane? Do we do a total reconfiguration of the existing sidewalk, bicycle lane, and parking that's kind of in front of Worldmark? And when we were out there last week, what makes the most sense is just the sidewalk. And the reason for that is, one, it can, it can clearly, clearly be done. If you, if you flip to this side, this, this first side is just existing. If you flip over here to this side, that kind of yellow line shows what we came up with last week. And that's basically just an extension of the sidewalk that's in front of Worldmark. So this would provide a contiguous sidewalk from Boiler Bay all the way to south of the bridge where the sidewalk ends on that west side. There's plenty of right-of-way here. We felt that it didn't make sense to try to strike a bicycle lane there. You're coming around a curve. And you've got the fog line which really acts as combined shoulder slash bike lane. And then you immediately, as soon as you get south of Thundering Shores driveway, it's where you start out. It does the main bike lane.
Where it starts from the center, yeah.
And then the sidewalk, the sidewalk would more or less be a straight shot. But there's, as I mentioned, there's ample right-of-way there. And what we talked about is trying to move it off so that there is a little separation between pedestrians and the actual vehicles that are coming in.
My question is, is it legal for a bicycle to hop up onto the sidewalk?
Well, actually, it depends on the jurisdiction. So I guess that would be a question for your town. I shouldn't say that because I know that in Portland it's not, and in Denver, where it was, I wasn't. But each town can actually have their own. The problem is, is you guys don't have, you might notice on that same picture, there's not a good shoulder on the right side. So if people from the community, and we've talked about this quite extensively, but they want to ride north into Boiler Bay, which I'd love to accommodate getting there anyway, if the people want to, they don't have a safe way to ride north and then scoot over to the other side of the street. So, but, so I did have some crazy ideas, which I won't tell you because then we really have a discussion, I feel. But about.
Well, you know, Jenna, let's be, let's be real here, okay? How's, how's, is, this is being behaved by, I mean, this is, this is a modern urban work environment.
Right, 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 exactly. So that's why I wasn't, we didn't get to the point of, you know, saying, well, you know, do we want to remove parking and make it a multi-use path so it's just this big thing? Or like, you could have a separated area for bikers and walkers. And I mean, that was what it came back to, is this, this is just not that type of environment. We don't know that that would get enough use. We don't know that there's, so let's, let's, let's do what really makes sense right now. You know, let's connect the sidewalk, right? And, and let's just do the, the really obvious fix, the thing that's been asked for. The cyclists have been getting around as they happen. I'd love to improve both, but it was just going to get too complicated to get it done in a timeframe that I think is reasonable.
So what, what, what will happen when you get your plans put together? Will someone bring them to the city? Do you, do you do public hearings around something like this?
You know, the way this, and again, I'm still learning some of this process too. But I think that the reason why we feel really comfortable investing in these projects and coming out of and identifying and prioritize in the transportation system plan is because they've already been vetted. You know, the community's already gone through that public process. And so that's why we look a lot to those planning documents. In fact, that's why Larry has a job. And why I have a job, because it's like, that's the phase, right? You identify those in the planning process, you go through the public process, you come up with your priorities. And then, and then hopefully you get funding for that. So that's what I'm here for, is to say, well, we happen to have a funding mechanism in place for this one project right now, and maybe more in the future. But let's do this one and go from there.
Do you need anything specific from this council?
No, not necessarily. I just wanted to, you know, introduce myself and, and let you guys know that we were talking about this. I went to the Parks Commission as well, and we talked to them. Because of course this touches on that spot, right? Where the city property lines up to the parks. And wanted to make sure that they were, you know, felt that there was a need as well, and we're on board with it. And they were pretty excited.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And so, yeah, so I don't know. I apologize if you don't get presentations often, if there's not an ask for you. And I don't mean to make it sound like I'm not interested to know how you feel. But it's a pretty straightforward opportunity because we've chosen, this is one of our first projects to do.
Right, and it has been vetted, removed, TSP.
That's right.
Well, the hearings that we had here early on.
That's right, exactly.
Does anyone have a final question or comment for anyone? Yes?
Yeah, I would definitely support the sidewalk. I'm not a great fan of bike lanes, having lived in Portland most of my life. And I, to me, and also worked in, well, anyway, but yeah, I find them horrifying. But especially the, some of the new ways they're applied.
Yeah, they're doing a lot.
It's extremely frightening. And the driver's always wrong, no matter what. So I really am supporter of sidewalks. I think they're good, gets people out walking, wheelchairs, can easily move along. And I think that would be lovely to have that.
Larry, any final words?
No, I'm glad it was your city.
Thanks.
Just one part clarity is that when you say Parks Commission, you don't mean Art Parks Commission?
Sorry, did I say it wrong?
Did you say, you said Parks Commission, did you mean the State Parks Commission?
No.
Or Art Parks?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you very much, Jenna.
Yes, you're welcome. Hopefully it will be in a reasonable timeline when you're. And I will be, is your project leader for the, for the south of the bridge, is that Savannah Crawford? Is she your contact?
Savannah's involved and Kristy.
Okay, they're both really good. So they will also move things along as fast as they can. But let me know if you're not hearing back from anyone. All right, thanks you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck to you in your new position.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to interview applicants to fill the vacancy for City Council position number six. We have one applicant, I think everyone here knows him pretty well, Robert Gambino. Would you like to come forward and say?
Robert Gambino, two thirty Southeast Anchor, in Devoe Bay. And I apply to be appointed to position number six. The two-year remaining of the next hire for you, sir.
Does anyone have any questions for Robert? You all know your work and we greatly appreciate it.
It's been an honor, four years.
Well, it's been our honor to have you working. Okay, well, in that case, I think we each had our ballots. If you would fill out your ballot now and turn it in, don't forget to sign your name. If I did last time, it was a little embarrassing.
I already have business cards, you have to make one.
So you have to be pre-ready?
What are you saying?
To the curb. He didn't know she wasn't going to be here, did he?
Probably, well, I'm sure he probably figured out now, don't you, Jenna? I think we can wait for a minute or so while Terry, I'll, I'll try to. Oh, I didn't have to tell him, okay.
Already done. At first glance, that sidewalk project proposal, it would seem that a year and a half would be an extraordinary period of time. But I tempered that in the fact that I haven't passed a lot of contractual work with the state. So that year and a half is probably, okay?
Hey, you give me a truck, a yellow, green, and a roller, and I'll have your sidewalk by next week.
That was the next eclipse after this one.
Are you ready, Terry?
All the ballots have been turned in, and the vote is unanimous to appoint Robert Gambino to City Council position number six.
Did you say unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the council's permission, I will swear, our new councillor is right now, and he can join us here and work with us for the rest of the meeting. Sure you want to read?
Yes.
Come forward, Robert.
Swear.
No, wait, I have to swear you in here. Can't sit down till I swear you. Aye, and say your name.
Aye, Robert Gambino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Devoe Bay.
And the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Devoe Bay.
And will faithfully, impartially, and honorably.
And will faithfully, impartially, and honorably.
Perform the duties of City Councillor Position Six.
Perform the duties of City Councillor Position Six.
To which I have been appointed to the best of my ability.
To which I have been appointed to the best of my ability.
Welcome, would you come and take a seat? So go ahead. I guess.
If the council would like to make the motion to accept the tally of voids and, tally of voids.
Oh, really?
And make their appointment? Just, just, you know.
Oh, yes, how do you make? Do I hear a motion to accept the tally of voids?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Robert?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
A?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Callum?
Yes.
Waisner?
Yes.
I'll call Robert Gambino.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is reports of officers, boards, or standing committees. Do we have any reports? No reports, okay? The next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yeah, name is Joe Steer, three eight seven zero, LaSalle, Hemmon Road. Not a voted citizen of Devoe Bay. I am with the group that sends out this brochure. Did any of you receive?
Yes, yes.
Okay. This left there, she hadn't, I thought that time was pretty firm, if she hadn't received it.
No, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay. Basically, just an invite, and we would like at least a couple of you to show up for this. So that's why I'm here, just to, instead of calling you individually, I just thought you'd show up. I've talked to Jerome there, not that big a way to do it, so. I'm just giving you a personal invite. I wish you, a couple of you would have the time to show up.
That's very thoughtful. Robert didn't get one.
I have no idea. No way.
It's Friday.
No, I mean, what, what we're talking about.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I got it. That's something I absolutely want to do, but not this year because it's on inauguration day. And I always.
Go there.
I need to watch that because it's important. I always watch it, no matter who wins. And so, but next time I would enjoy going.
Okay. And this is something that industry and the small woodlands and farm here, we've talked about quite a few years. Jim Reed, the OSF Extension Agent, had actually had it set up with the county, 4H, and was working on it. And then he retired. And now this Valerie Grant, I think that's her name. She has continued it, so I decided that industry, that we would start doing it. So that's where we're at.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your giving us an in-person consultation. Can I get one copy?
Joe, to, to, to explain to the council, like, what it is that your group does?
The group, I mean, I, I can kind of represent industry a little bit, timber industry. Or if I say timber industry, I can represent farm here or the Lincoln County Small Woodlands. Lincoln County Small Woodlands is basically timber tractors that have between five and five thousand acres. And that's kind of the criteria for membership in that. It's a very diverse group. I mean, we've got people in that group that are all the way, I would say, from what I would consider totally organic, no spraying, no this, no that, to people like me that are more industry-oriented producers, none of that. Farm here is a little different. You do have to really be a producer that belongs to that. And then if I say industry is, what you see is fifty percent of the county. So, and that's where we're at. I do have one little call I make, and Bruce, that recorder here. This is just a, this is just a hunch, but there's another industrial group, and this is Western Oregon Forest Protection Association. That's for the group that kind of. That's for the, the group that kind of watches over the tax money for firefighting. Every summer, they have a tour. I have a strong hunch the tour's gonna be right behind you next summer, so. And, uh, if you guys are interested, I'll make sure you get invited to that.
Sure.
I'm gonna get you invited regardless, so.
Now, on the Friday, can you promise that it won't be raining and...
No, no, I will promise that when you're there at the meeting, you will not be losing a dollar.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Then, like I said, I did reserve a couple of spots for Deepwater Bay, so if you want to go, or quick, it is Friday, so.
Thank you.
Free lunch.
Oh, boy. You got me there.
Okay.
Send the magic words.
We have a couple of really important items of unfinished business. Um, the first is that we have to elect a council president, if you remember, we put that off until the, uh... So do I hear any nominations for council president? I'd like to nominate Robert Gambino. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations?
I, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Goddard.
Do you accept the nomination, Mr. Goddard?
Grudgingly. With my busy season coming up, and in fact, uh, it's on me right now, I don't know that I can commit that much time. I'm very, very concerned about it.
Okay.
Well, then, I'll, I'll, I, you don't think? Are you willing to take it, or, because I, I'm really...
I'm really not willing at this time.
Okay.
But I...
I will draw my, my nomination.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for being thoughtful of the council.
Certainly.
Are there any other nominations? No, if not, then, um, how do we, can, can we do a voice vote?
Call and roll, call and roll.
Okay.
Are you ready for that?
Yes.
Okay. Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Callender?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
And you?
Sure.
Thank you, Robert, I'm gonna take this.
You still can, that means...
That was a great promotion.
Okay. Now, right in line with that, we have to, uh, we have to complete councilor assignments. You all should have gotten, uh, I think you've got them last week in your packets, the list of what the councilor assignments are.
Does everybody still have that from the last meeting, the memo that lists out the different organizations and a very, very brief summary of what it means to be the city's representative to that organization?
And then, the second page is who, who had been doing it?
I only have one left over.
Do you have it? I have it. Do you have it? Do you share mine? This is the page that counts.
Oh, okay.
Actually, two left over.
Oh, good, okay.
Anybody down there?
Sorry. Yeah? I got mine.
You need one, Jeff?
Okay, so...
Your chair from Orange.
Sure. Cascades West, uh, Council of Government, AJ had been the city representative. Is, is that because he was the mayor, or because he was interested in this particular...
It, it's not a mayoral assignment, but he volunteered because he...
And Jeff, you were the alternate, would you like to become the city's representative?
Yeah. I can do that.
Yes, is that, how, do we have to vote on all of these?
Uh, if, if you'd like. Not individually, but, you know, we can do a recap, um, and, uh, and then do the motion to make those the same as at the end.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone else who's interested in Cascades West before I ask Jeff to do it? If, um, maybe you want to be the representative, and I'll be your alternate, how's that?
That would work.
Okay. Uh, the Commission on Transportation, Cascades West area, Robert, you want to continue doing that?
I'd like to, yeah.
I think you told me on the...
Been excellent for four years, yeah.
Okay. Um, why don't we get the representatives, and then we can fill in the blanks later? The Lincoln County Solid Waste Consortium, um...
I was, I was the alternate, yeah, but probably went most of the time, I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Okay, so you want to do that, too? Okay. Okay, um... And the Lincoln County Public Safety, I know that you're interested in that, that gives you three committee assignments. Do you want to do all of that?
Yeah, um, yes, I do. And I'll tell you why, Cascades West Commission on Transportation, I'm very interested in. I really appreciate being, uh, even know on that. Lincoln County Solid Waste Consortium is important, it doesn't take a lot of time. Um, meetings generally only go about thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, maybe. And Lincoln County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, I'm very interested in, but I have yet to have a meeting.
Their, they, their schedule is to meet quarterly, and I know that at least the very last meeting was unscheduled.
Yeah, so it's not bad at all for them.
Okay. The Lincoln County Solid Waste District Advisory Committee, Brady, it's appropriate for you to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, to keep that.
Yeah, I'm the chair.
Oh, you're the chair? Yeah, I guess we don't want to take you away from that. Okay, and, um, you, uh, OCC, oh, I'm sorry, the Oregon Co-Zone Management Association, Jerome?
I'll, I'll take it, I just think that Lauren is more, I mean, I've been terrible at communicating with the OCCMA. I'd be happy to take that on, I've, I've served as the alternate for, I don't know how many years, more than a couple. So I'd be happy to do that.
So you'll do that? Okay, so Lauren, okay, uh...
And I'll take the alternate representative, unless you did...
So you're just gonna switch, switch positions there, Jerome?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I could do that.
Okay, so, uh, we need an alternate for the Cascades West Council of Governments, government.
I, I could do that.
Okay, Jerome. And the Commission of Transportation, I guess I could do that, I haven't picked one up, that's not great, so I can do that. And the Public Safety Coordinating Council for Lincoln County? Are you an alternate on that, too? Okay. And the Solid Waste Consortium, we need an alternate for that.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like anything I would know anything about.
You don't like waste?
Uh, I'll agree with, I'll, I can do that, it's the...
I know. I, I want to be on the safety committee.
Oh.
And so, because I've done that before for years.
Okay, then you become, then you be the alternate, I won't be the alternate on that, how's that? You be the alternate on that, and maybe Robert will take you with him to meetings.
If there is one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me know. Um, and Jerome's gonna be the alternate on the Solid Waste Consortium. Who should your alternate be, where you, should that be me, or can that be someone else?
Uh, yeah, um, yeah. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. And, uh, well, OCC, okay, have you got that?
I think so. I got lost for a little bit on the safety committee, because when I heard safety committee, I was thinking of the City Safety Committee, where you're talking about the Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Right.
And that's Debbie is the alternate, Robert's the...
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
So do you want me to read them off, and then we'll do a motion?
Okay.
Okay, Cascades West Council of Government, uh, Jeff is the representative, and Jerome is the alternate. Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation, Robert is the representative, I'm the alternate. Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council, Robert is the representative, um, Deb is the alternate. Lincoln County Solid Waste Consortium, Robert is the representative, Jerome is the alternate. Lincoln County Solid Waste District Advisory Committee, Brady is the representative, uh, I'm the alternate. I guess I should say my name, Barbara's the alternate. Oregon Co-Zone Management Association, uh, Lauren is the representative, and Jerome is the alternate. Do I hear a motion to approve all of these appointments?
So moved. Second. Somebody lead you to it?
Yeah, we can add the second.
You got the second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bates?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Callender?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Left?
Uh, there are, there are these four that aren't on that, oh, that are next, they're the sitting ones, as opposed to the agency ones. We have to do those.
I'm gonna back you up for just a second.
Okay.
On the vote on the second motion. Left?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Yes.
Okay. Okay. You're trying to do the meeting, Mary. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. Yes.
Okay.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Okay, so we've got four city committees, audit review, safety, wastewater advisory, and accounts payable. Audit review has been Jerome and Jeff.
Someone like to stay on that one?
I'd like to stay on that one, okay. Okay, they'll stay. Safety Committee, I think I heard Deb, yes, Deb would like to do that.
That's great.
Wastewater Advisory, um, Jerome and Jeff, is this the one you and I were talking about that I should be on as well?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct, for a question, for each of them.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Okay. Only for you, Brady, for that, okay. And accounts payable, you want to go back to doing that?
Sure.
Thank you, I'll be your alternate.
I'm a losing kind of guy, it's what it is.
Okay, so, for the City's Audit Review Committee, Jerome Grant and Jeff Wiseman will serve, no alternates. Safety Committee, Deb will serve, there are no alternates, but I would be happy to back you up with...
How many meetings a year?
One, once a month.
Oh, but, that's not...
Yeah. And we'll...
I'll be on.
We just try to figure everybody's schedule out, and, yeah.
Okay, Wastewater Advisory Committee, um, Jerome Grant, Jeff Wiseman, Barbara Leff. Accounts payable, Robert Gambino, Barbara Leff, alternate. Do I hear a motion? For City's...
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Grant?
Aye.
Callender?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I ask you to move the room now?
I will be leaving. If you walk in the room.
And don't forget the one...
Last thing you know, it was unlocked.
I have a procedural question. Oh. Well, this is a public meeting. Yeah, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the city reporter recruiting. A couple of things to get us going. I, I have, uh, all of the forms turned in, except from two counselors, and yours are coming, I know, uh, tomorrow, so we should... My goal is to have them all in hand, uh, by midday or end of day tomorrow at the latest, so that I can begin to collate them. We missed two important things when we were putting all of this together, which I have to thank Deb Callender for pointing out to me. And I'm not quite sure how to go about fixing them at this point. One was that there was no indication of any sort of veterans preference, and I think, uh, that is something we should certainly consider. And two, uh, we, we never asked anywhere in the materials, or I guess on the website, for a listing of computer skills, which is also critical. So at the very least, we need to remember that for the next time, we might have to do this kind of a search. The computer skills thing, I think we can deal with in, uh, in, for anyone that goes to interview. Veterans preference, I'm not quite sure if there's anyone in that group where that's relevant, but we need to...
Only one, I saw.
Okay. We need to think about that, uh, and figure out what we want to do before we, uh, actually start the interview process. That doesn't have to stop us from, from our executive session to review all of the, uh, all of the resumes that came in. So, so that you know, you each got in your package, I promised you a timeline, um, for the, for the current next steps. And, uh, it's here, uh, you can look at it, I don't think I need to go over it point by point, if you have any questions. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it prior to the meeting. You will also be getting via email or delivery, or we'll call you when it's ready, if you don't have email, a list of, um, interview questions, because we'd like to have your feedback. We will, we will develop the final list of questions, uh, once we have your feedback. You will be getting this, uh, list of questions for you to review and give feedback on. Email instructions about how to get the, uh, give a little time on that, because once we review the resumes, then we have to be in the process of setting up interviews. Now, what I would like to do is to schedule an executive session sometime between this Friday and next week. And I include weekends, because I know someone who are gonna be leaving on extended business travel in the near future, and that's, uh, that's an issue. So can we pick a time for a good two hours and a good run to three? And I'll make sure we have snacks for an executive session. I, I'm saying not before Friday, because we'll have to notice it, and we need time to do that. The idea here is not to, is to not have to wait two weeks for the next meeting, because we are so far behind the pair. Perry's going to be leaving in early March, um, and we haven't even done a single interview. Yeah, it's even further, right. So, Perry, you want to help us? You're really good at...
Well, I, I've got a conflict. I mean, I planned a, uh, two weeks out of town.
Sorry, when?
Uh, between sessions here, so I'm leaving, uh, this Saturday, and I won't be back until the second of February.
Could you meet on Friday?
Uh, when?
Well, I don't know, it's up to the group as a whole, I can't, I can't.
By six, I can meet at six.
So you could meet like from six to eight on Friday?
Um, yeah, I could do that.
How about everybody else? You talk about this Fri- this Friday?
Sure.
I can do essentially any time Friday.
Okay, why don't...
Six a.m., six to eight p.m.
for them to get themselves able to get here for the interviews. So, when are you coming back from your trip, Jerome?
I'll be here, I'll be back on the evening of the 2nd.
The evening of the 2nd, which is a Thursday evening, yeah. Thank you. And then, but now, you're going away, Lauren, see, we may lose a counselor or two for one or, you know, for an interview now and again, and, when are you leaving, Lauren?
I'm here through the 7th of February.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, you see the issue, this is, scheduling is going to be a bear, which is why we did this, if you will each put in, on any days when you're going to be available, actually just February and March, because nothing's going to happen at the end of January, the days that you're available, and whether you can do morning, afternoon, evening, in the times that are mentioned here on the top of the first page, morning would be 9:00 to noon, afternoon 2:00 to 5:00, evening 6:00 to 8:00, if you could do the whole day, that's, you know, just write it in the day, write your name in the day, and whether it's morning, afternoon, or evening, and then when we get those all back, we can start with the scheduling. Okay? When should we ask reviews back?
Would it be possible to, for everyone to look at their future calendars and bring it to the meeting on Friday?
Ah, is that a reasonable request? Everyone? Yeah? Okay, good. Okay, good. That's a good solution. Okay, I don't have anything else on the recruitment at this point, does anyone else have a question or something you said here or whatever? No? Okay, let's move on, we just need a minute to get Jeff back.
He's not back?
He's back, okay. The next item on the agenda is solar eclipse planning. I asked Jackie McKim to come to the meeting, some of you may recall that Jackie and I, almost three years ago now, yeah, it's almost three years ago.
No, it was two years ago.
Two years ago, put together a meeting for the.
It was three years ago, I started jumping up and down and shaking like this and calling and saying, people need to know this.
Right, and we did a great job. We could not, it was difficult to get the people in Depot Bay to focus, but we were able to set up a meeting with the three chambers of commerce, Lincoln City, Depot Bay, and Newport, and a couple of, I think you were at that meeting, Jerome, I know AJ was.
I was.
You were, okay, maybe it was you. And there were about 40 people at that meeting, and it was, it was productive, because it got, it got the Coast Guard and the county sheriff focused in a way they hadn't focused at all before. We got letters of thank you from them, for helping them realize how big this event was going to be. I asked Jackie if she'd bring copies of the materials that we gave to people. Again, this was focused on business opportunities and potential, opportunities and calamities, both potentials for the, for the time of the eclipse, so you can look at these later. I propose that we form a committee, and has one or two counselors on it, because of her broad knowledge of, of all of this, I'd like to ask, I'd like the council to approve asking Jackie to serve, and we have in Depot Bay a citizen, he lives in Stonebridge, I only recently met him, but he lived in Hawaii before he retired, and he was a travel agent, and he was in Honolulu when they had a total eclipse a few years ago, I think it was 71, 81?
91.
91, yeah. And he knows a whole lot about it, he was very involved in the city's planning and all sorts of things, and he has volunteered to help the city in any way possible, so if the council would agree, then I would like to invite him also to serve on the committee. I tried to reach him, and then I learned that he's away on vacation, so. Barbara?
Yes.
I want to point out something in this, because these are just, these are the ones that we used, and we've got a back page, it's saying, well, first of all, there's a glaring typo that we both missed, it's good to find that out to your editor, but it says we have two and a half years to plan this, we don't, so, we can just mark out that two right now.
Yes.
Yeah, we have seven months.
Yeah. And there are all sorts of questions for the city, are we going to let people camp in our parks, are we going to try to get porta-potties, we're probably already too late, my guess is that every porta-potty west of the Rockies is going to count for, but certainly we should try.
But now they want someone who is safety, transportation, and solid waste to your immediate right.
Yes. Then we also, we also have the, do we want the, you know, does the city want to do any special events? Who would be responsible for them? Would it be the chamber, the business community, is there anything that city government wants to do? Should the city do anything to, to support visitors and residents? I brought samples of the glasses, everyone has to protect their eyes, or they could end up seriously blind. I brought samples of glasses, which the manufacturer was kind enough to print up for this meeting that we held, but you can pass those around. Do we want to look at the possibility of getting, you know, several thousand of these for our own citizens or for, or, but, you know, certainly I intend to recommend to the chamber that it gets some, and has some available for visitors. But these are all the kinds of questions that I would like to see a committee working on, yes?
There's something that I heard about recently, are two major hotels doubling their rates for those days, well, the two that I heard about doubled it and then put it a two-day requirement, is that legal?
Not only is it legal.
I mean, could the restaurants double their food prices? I mean.
Sure they should, they asked. They asked, yes, they said.
Not only is it legal, it is frankly expected. Okay, this is not going to the coast.
I can speak to one example of the city.
Okay, we have, we're getting out of here.
Are you familiar with the little place right down here, just this side of Pirate Cove that's called the Pirate Cove Inn? It's just two small rentals, side by side.
Okay.
It used to be Big Mountain Coffee Inn.
Okay.
Their normal rate for an overnight stay, depending on the time of year and the day of week that you rent, runs from $160 to $260. That weekend, it is $680 a night, and its rent.
One other example, there was a total eclipse in, in England, that hit Lancelon, England a few years ago, and someone wrote about his experience, you know, there are people that go all over the world chasing eclipses, and he had his bicycle and his backpack, and he had no place to sleep, he knocked on somebody's door, he saw a couple of tents on the lawn, and he said, could I rent enough space from you just to put down my sleeping bag? And the guy said, sure, for a thousand pounds, and you know what? He took it, it was a good deal. Okay, so, yes, this is not unusual, it is to be expected.
All right.
However, we also would like it if the people who came here went home feeling like it was a decent experience, and, you know, there are great concerns, the fire district is looking at, how are they going to get, there are going to be a lot of first aid issues, okay? They're especially worried about the seawall, because they expect thousands of people are going to try to be in that area, and they were talking about using bicycles to get around with, with medical kits, because probably we won't be able to put an engine on 101. You know, we live on a two-lane street, if you will, and when you, when you've got a quarter of a million cars and more people than that, half a million, so, so there's much for this committee to look at and think about, and there's not a lot of time to be working on it. I also think the committee should be in touch with the Lincoln County folks, what's the sheriff's office doing, what's the emergency services office or the county doing? I understand that they haven't done anything, but have figured out that this is the weak deal, and are now looking at doing something. So, this is an important job, and I would certainly appreciate it if the council would move to form a committee of a couple of counselors and some citizens to work on this.
I will make that motion, Mayor Leff, we've got two, the name two to serve on the committee already.
With the committee, with the council's approval, I can, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Any, any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I see this, I think the scope of this committee, I see the scope of this committee in reaching out to the other governments that will be involved, like the county and the state of Oregon, and, and I guess, I'm particularly concerned about sanitary services, if the state Oregon or the county will provide some, some sandicans and some, honey buckets, you think? Or, do they have, they have something?
They do have a couple.
Oh, honey buckets, that's one of the names, yeah, so that we have some kind, something that, you know, to keep people from defecating in the road, yeah.
That's going to be a huge, you're right, that's a huge deal, and I think we also, you're talking about the other statewide organizations, we need to get the Parks Department.
Right, the state, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really important, because people are going to, and the Parks Commission is going to have to make a recommendation to us about what are we going to do?
Sign tomorrow's agenda.
Good, good. Would you call roll please? Is there any other discussion?
Would you call roll please?
Callender?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Leff?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a couple of council members who would like to serve.
I'll serve.
Jerome is interested in serving, Lauren is interested in serving, and if it's okay with the council, I'd like to be an ex officio, because I can't do everything, but this is something I would create personal interest in.
What can you do in the role?
Thank you. Okay.
I was in the full eclipse in Oaxaca, Mexico, and Jackie probably knows when that was, and there were prehistory, at least 2,000 sunscreen, is it sunscreen traders, those silver?
Airstream.
Airstream.
Airstream, yeah.
There were at least 2,000 of them that were just for that.
Yes.
Plus, plus, plus.
Yeah. We have, we have not, from what I know about the history here, we have never had the influx that we're going to have.
We're about to have.
This is going to be the largest influx of people in a, in a short period of time that the coast has ever seen.
Weather permitting.
I don't think the weather will stop people, because it totally.
Yes, it won't stop them, because there's, the glasses, you're not holding any, like the glasses that she passed out, if you have a pair of those, and you're standing in solid fog, you won't be able to see anything until totality, if you're wearing those glasses, totality will look just like there's no fog around you.
Yeah.
It's, it's an amazing phenomenon, actually, I shouldn't say, if you're wearing those glasses, you don't need to have those glasses if there's fog, because you'll still see totality, if you're wearing those glasses during totality, you'll see nothing, so that's important to note, too, is if you have these neat glasses that everybody should have, when totality hits, take them all.
Yeah.
Or you'll get a big show of nothing.
I found a book that is absolutely, I, this is, I bought a copy just for you.
Okay, thank you.
And I gave one to Perry, too, because she has my children, the title is Go See the Eclipse and Take a Kid With You, and this book is written so that any, any idiot who's never, doesn't know a thing about astronomy can learn from it, and I needed that, because I've just, and it's very helpful and very good, and, you know, this is something we may want to consider doing something with, activity with the kids on, I mean, there are all kinds of.
Certainly, they're very much interesting.
Yes, okay. So, who's going to take responsibility for putting the first meeting of this committee together? Is that something that I should do, since it was my idea? Will you do it?
Yeah, sure, I'll get together with Lauren, and give you the names and Jackie, I'll figure something out.
Okay. Super, you got it, this is yours. Okay, wonderful.
Yours too.
Yes, it's mine too.
No, he was pointing at you.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, the proposed amendment number one, Coast Avenue Infrastructure Improvements contract.
Just an update on it?
Yes.
It's kind of the same thing you talked about earlier, it's about three quarters of the way completed, we're now to the overlay asphalt portion of it, we're finding that a lot of the neighbors along Coast Avenue from the bridge all the way to South Point Street are negotiating with road and driveway companies to have aprons done, and kind of have a little asphalt work done while they're there, and so it's going to improve the aesthetics even a much more. But the water mains installed, the fire mains are, the flubs are a mess, the quality of the water is great, everything went pretty smooth, there's a few rocks in the road and construction due to implement weather, but it's complete, the hard part's over, it's just relying on road and driveway, they did a good overlay down, they, they just did, it's part of my report, but I guess I could talk about it now, Point Avenue just got done last week, and they did a fabulous job on Point Avenue, it was really nice.
Okay, wonderful.
Yours too.
Yes, it's mine too.
No.
No, he was pointing at you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, um, the proposed amendment number one Coast Avenue Infrastructure Improvements contract.
Just an update on it?
Yes.
It's, uh, kind of same thing we talked about earlier, it's about three-quarters of the way completed. We're now to the overlay asphalt portion of it. We're finding that a lot of the neighbors along Coast Avenue from the bridge all the way to South Point Street are negotiating with road and driveway companies to have papers done, kind of have a little asphalt work done while they're there, and so it's gonna improve the aesthetics even out much more. But, um, the, the water mains installed, the fire mains are served, the flows are mess, the, the quality of the water is great. Everything went pretty smooth, there's a few rocks in the road and construction due to the weather, but it's complete, the hard part's over, it's just relying on road and driveway to get a good overlay down. They, they just did, it's part of my report, but I guess I could talk about it now, Point Avenue just got done last week, and they did a fabulous job on Point Avenue, it was really nice. The neighbors were so happy how, that was the last phase of, of South Point, was to have Point Avenue completed. And doing, doing these road overlay projects, but having utilities addressed prior to it, I think down the road is more feasible for the city. Some of the roads we've done in the past, Williams Avenue and East Lee's stuff, we're, we're gonna have to go back potentially and sock out these roads and put a water main in and then pay over it and rent this, this patch there, but that's something kind of new back then, and it's just wasn't feasible prior to replacing utilities. But if we plan ahead and do our homework, I think it's, it's doable, and we're proof of it now, so. Anyway, it's, it's been a great project and.